Back to the top of the agenda, Superintendent's Reports, Policy for Special Education Classroom Observations and BB School Improvement Plan.
We'll start with the Policy for Special Education Classroom Observations. In your packet, and I believe also earlier you received through the mail, a draft of a model policy, if you will, that's supported by both the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents as well as the Mass Association of School Committees. And per the request of the committee, I've asked Maura Johnson to join us this evening. Maura is the Administrator in Charge of Personnel, Pupil Personnel Services, and she has reviewed the letter, or I'm sorry, the policy, and is available to answer any questions. I don't know, Maura, if you want to preface it with anything, but...
I would just say that...
The floor is yours.
This policy...
Just pull that microphone.
Sure. The purpose of the policy is to give parents and their advocates sufficient time to look at programs, and to look at them in a timely manner, and to evaluate either a program that a child is in now, or parents have the right to observe a proposed program.
Questions? Mr. Wizel.
Yeah, thank you for coming this evening, and on the Policy Committee, one of the questions, I think we were basically inclined to recommend that the committee as a whole accept the policy. Just, we were waiting for input. I mean, do you see anything in the policy that would cause you pause, or should we bury from that?
No problems at all. I think it works very smoothly here. Parents' requests, we have a five-day period turnaround. Sometimes I think that you can run into problems, in theory, if someone wants to come in during MCAS testing, or the first day of school. So we try and work with families and their representatives to make it work for the school. When an advocate comes in for a parent, we have a school administrator accompany the person as well.
So you see this, we're just basically adopting a standard policy?
Yes.
You wouldn't have no issues with that?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Wizel. Mrs. Valero.
Thank you. I also want to thank you from the Policy Subcommittee for coming before us to discuss this. As a matter of fact, at the Policy Subcommittee in October when we had discussed this, that's when we requested, Ms. Maura, to come forward, just in case there were additional change to the standard MASC policy. Being that there's not any additional changes, maybe it, depending on the consideration of the body as a whole, we could either vote on it this evening, since it's a standard policy, or we can table it. So with recommendation from the body as a whole, what they would like to do, I myself would like to move to make a motion to pass it this evening.
Recommendation so noted. Ms. Dag...
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you.
On the right, other questions?
Just a procedural question, Mr. Chairman. Is it something that has to go in front of the public, like at a, given a 48-hour notice to go to the Policy Subcommittee? I'm not sure. It's a great policy. I spoke to Jim Hardy, actually, about two policies, and this being one of them, but I'm not sure if it has to go back to policy with a 48-hour notice that there could be a change. I'm not sure.
Point of information?
Yes, point of information.
The committee can amend the policy at any time. So, since then, I think our practice has been to have the Policy Subcommittee to study anything of, certainly of any substance, and this would be one, you know, make a recommendation to the entire committee, but it appears as though we have a sense of...
Yeah.
But I have a question along the same lines. I may have missed this part of the presentation. You can stand there. I know that there's a parent advisory that follows special education, and do they consult us about this, and their way of...
Maura, you want, I know that Maura's had a meeting with them. I don't know whether this was a part of the agenda.
I did a question.
Wondering if whether or not the Parent Advisory Committee has, at any point in time, looked at or reviewed this particular policy?
I know we reviewed it when it first was proposed last year, and I'm remembering if we discussed it most recently. I think we did. I'm going to check the agenda, yeah.
So no serious concerns?
No, it's on our agenda. It's actually, to clarify, there really isn't any change date, so it's been the standard policy for a while. So we did go over it recently, maybe in September. September, maybe. And just to make sure that it was filed clearly, everything was fine.
That was the chair's only question. Otherwise, it is in order to add to our policy. It's been recommended by the Chair of Policy to so adopt. Do you have a second on that?
Second.
Mr. Duffy, second. Any other questions or comments on it? I'm sorry?
Let me sit down my second.
We're putting Ms. Dag Angelow down as the second. So thank you, Mr. Duffy. So all in favor on the adoption of the policy as proposed?
Aye.
Any polls? None, it's passed. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Maura. Moving along, I would like to now ask Principal Susan Vatalaro of the BB School to step forward. Susan is here tonight to give a brief introduction to the School Improvement Plan, BB School Improvement Plan. I know everybody has had that in hand for a week now, and has marked up the text and highlighted it, and is all set to go. But Maura will just give a brief presentation. What we really want to do is to give you an opportunity to ask Susan...
Susan.
Maura, excuse me. Maura, thank you very much for joining us. Susan will give a very brief presentation. I won't, but give you an opportunity to ask questions of her. So Susan.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Howard, Superintendent Smith, Assistant Superintendent Nancy Kazabian, and members of the school committee, and student representative. With me this evening are the members of the BB School Council. I have with me Dave Legia, Amy Santiago, and Da'wa Shen, they were my teachers, and I have parent Egma Alper, and my assistant principal, Jerry Rui. The others may be coming. I thought the meeting was seven o'clock, too. It is our pleasure to be here this evening to present the BB School Improvement Plan. The goal of our plan is aligned with our district goal. We want all our students to be knowledgeable, collaborative, independent learners who meet or exceed established benchmark standards on all required state, district, and classroom assessments. Our needs, strengths, and weaknesses were identified based on MCAS and local assessment data. The plan was submitted last June and updated with our new data from the 2009 MCAS. There's a great deal of data in the plan. It's in the appendix at the back of the book. The strands, standards, and questions where there is a concern were identified. We found in ELA, students having some difficulty making complex inferences, students lack awareness of structures and elements of nonfiction, and students were having difficulty with open response questions. In mathematics, students were having difficulty with number sense, their not understanding of responding accurately to written text, and students are having some difficulty with the relationship between fractions and decimals. In our subgroups, our English language learners and special education students, they're having difficulty with vocabulary and reading comprehension strategies, also with vocabulary decoding, and, once again, number sense. Starting on page 48 of the plan, right after the first pink divider in the plan that I sent to you a week or so ago, our action plan begins. It states our improvement objectives and the strategies we'll be using in detail to improve on these concerns. The plan, the action plan is very detailed. Instructional plans have been written for all our students. In addition to individualized classroom instruction by the classroom teacher, students identified as having some risks also receive, one or more, the following interventions, and I included them on the first page of that pamphlet I just handed to you. Such interventions as Lexia, ERI, Wilson Foundations, My Sidewalks, Quick Reads, the Wilson Program, Read 180. You can read about them in more detail on the sheet that I handed out to you. As you can see, those interventions are really aligned with our needs and what we need, and we're targeting our instruction. And it's not about what they do at the end of the year. We want to know how our students are doing at regular intervals. That's why progress monitoring is so important. We want to make sure that the interventions are effective. We are just not doing summative assessments at the end and say, oh, next year, let's see if we do a little better. We are doing more formative assessments throughout the year to make sure students are not falling through cracks, and all our inventions, interventions are effective. We progress monitor the students through DIBELS, GRADE, MACE, and Fresh Reads. Now, we also have made many gains. I just mentioned to you some of the weaknesses, but attached, you will see charts that show the percentage of students who have passed MCAS in each subject and at every grade level. Second chart in your handout that I gave you. For instance, in ELA, in grade three, 85% of the kids passed MCAS, 84 in grade four, 90 in grade five, 90 in grade six, 97 in grade seven, 98 in grade eight. They passed MCAS. On the bottom, as you know, the Complacent Proficiency Index, the AYP, is based on all kids who score proficient or advanced getting 100 points, but the kids in needs improvement, they get 75, and low needs improvement 50. And as you can see in the second chart, the number of kids who scored proficient or advanced, the numbers are lower. That's the gap. We have a lot of kids who pass, majority of the kids pass. Kids do not fail, but where are these other kids? They're in the needs improvement category. And that's the next page. You will see how many kids are in the needs improvement category. And these kids are right on that cusp. Many of them are right on the cusp between needs improvement and proficient. And these are the kids, through these interventions, that we need to move. And we really believe that the open response questions, they play a significant role in moving our students forward. The scores on the open response questions, when they're factored in, they're factored in significantly. So we need to attain these points from our open response questions. These questions require students to apply combined reading comprehension skills and writing skills in order to write a response that includes both main ideas and details. And students also need to elaborate on these details. Our interventions, instructional strategies, and emphasis on how we answer open response questions will help us meet this goal of moving many of our students into the proficient We have developed a comprehensive, detailed improvement plan. We will be able to execute this plan due to the hard work and collegiality of our central office administrators, directors, district leadership team, school leadership team, teachers, and our parents. While academic studies are of utmost importance in our school, we also provide for the cultural and social development of our students through group projects and activities. The entire BB community has played a major role in helping us meet our goals. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have on our plan, our goals...
Mr. Ivy.
Mr. Ivy.
Thank you, sir.
So we've done a fine job, and I commend you and the BB School Parent Association and your school leadership team. It's an incredible plan, very, very detailed. But obviously, this is not just a one-year plan.
No.
This is ongoing in a year, two years, three...
This would be, we, like I said, we completed it last June, and every time, you complete a plan, you get new data, and you improve on it. You keep targeting the needs of the kids. Teachers are not saying to me, how did my class do last year? They're now saying to me, I want to see the individual scores of each and every student. I want to see what the kids are doing. So it's very prescriptive to the needs of the kids. It's not just looking at it as a class, but the individual needs. And I believe that with all the interventions, many of these interventions, we didn't have two or three years ago. So I believe that we are going in the right direction.
Just a follow-up question, if I could.
Ready?
You know, we focus, as we should, on MCAS and the interventions and data regarding growth and proficiency, which is very important. But another factor that I think is equally important are the themes under which, pardon me, the schools were open. Can you tell us something about the theme that's going on at the BB, and is it still ongoing in addition to everything else that you do?
We do have our theme team. Our theme at BB School, as you know, is health and environmental science, and I'm very proud of the fact that our teachers participate. We have a representative from each grade level on the team, as well as the exploratory teachers. We develop an essential question every year. We have, this year, it's the importance of water in our environment, and the teachers at every grade level develop an essential question based on that theme, and kids will work on project-based units. Last year, we do, every four years, we change, they come back to the same essential question. This year, as I said, it's the importance of water. We have Malden, our community. For the health piece, a better ME, a better BB, a better Malden, and we do the rainforest. So the kids get, study the theme at the lower level, and then when they're in grades five to eight.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions? Mr. O'Tree? Thank you, Mr. Avino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You run a great school, Ms. Vatalaro, your experience. When I became a principal and was young, I remember calling you, what should I do in this case? And the community itself looks up to people like you, too. You've dedicated your whole career, I won't say how many years, but your whole career to the city of Malden.
I guess so.
But also, you have a great faculty and staff behind you.
I do.
So no leader is anything without two great assistant principals and a number of faculty and staff. I have a quick, a couple of questions. In regards to special education or English language learners, which I'm sure are all categories across the Commonwealth that are going to need improvement, these interventions, I'm sure some of these systems work for that, but what do you feel that the faculty needs to work on or has been working on to get those subgroups up another notch?
As you know, many of my staff members, majority of them, have completed the category training, working with ELL students, and we also have our ELL staff, my two ELL teachers work, they help our teachers in professional development, they go into the classroom, they share ideas, they support the students, and they're doing, they're participating in the writing block that every class has. The ELL teacher is in there helping those particular students. So they're working collaboratively with the classroom teachers. And a lot of the interventions that are here are great interventions for our ELL students, especially the vocabulary and the comprehension.
Are there any concerns that you have over the years, and especially as we have these students increasing with maybe behavioral problems, or is it independent management, Superintendent, is what we...
The independent management program...
Independent management, because do you feel you have enough support or resources to deal with that?
Like you said, I have a great staff, great teachers, great assistant principals. I couldn't ask for any more. And the kids have been really, really good. I have to give them a great deal of credit. They've been very cooperative. They enjoy our school, and I believe that they're making great progress because of the non-threatening, comfortable atmosphere that we have created at the school for them.
Last question. You submitted a budget last year, and you'll be submitting a budget this year, like you have for X amount of years. What do you feel, we don't know what we're going to get for a budget next year, and, you know, when I used to ask myself, gee, what could I do to improve my school or your school? Well, it's always time and money. Well, you'll never have enough time in school day, whether you have an extended day or not, and the money is always going to be based on the money and what we're allocated. But do you see anything you would do differently next year when you sit with your leadership team that you said, you know, if we want to get this group up, you know, I'm just generalizing, this group up to this, we really need this program, we need funding in this? What would you be asking the school committee to support you on?
Interventionists, always. Small group instruction. We have a large, we have large classes. We have 25, 26 kids in our classes. The teachers are doing a great job. We're doing a lot of small group instruction, a lot of centers, and many of our Title I teachers or special ed teachers, some of them are covering two grades, and with a four-strand building, it's hard for them to be in eight different classrooms during ELA block or during the math block. So they do the best they can, and we've been able to, with creative scheduling, mirror certain schedules so that they can be in ELA for some students and then go into the math block for another grade. But that gets a little, sometimes it gets a little bit difficult when, it depends on the grade and how many kids need that service.
So you'd be advocating, like every other principal, smaller class sizes?
Oh, right.
Do you feel you have enough...
Or, like I said...
More interventionists?
More interventionists.
Thank you very much. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Tree. Mr. Crowe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mrs. Vatalaro. Obviously, there's a lot of work that's been put into this plan, so congratulations to you and your team. Mine's just really more of a curiosity question. I know on the Title I Parents Survey, now, obviously, that was done last year. Do you know if that was done in every school? Because I know that only, as Superintendent said earlier, that the BB, Ferryway, and Salem would have sort of the parent education components in those schools.
Right. I'm not sure if they have...
You're not sure? And so have you been able to take some of the survey information? Because some of it, obviously, you know, you can't be put in a GED class at the...
At the BB.
Some of the things that they wanted, but have you had an opportunity to kind of implement some of those suggestions?
Some of those things that we have, scheduling PTO meetings and workshops, and we've tried to accommodate the scheduling needs of our parents.
And so did it go to all, everybody in the school, or just, so you only got, you got 86 responses?
Right.
But do you know what that percentage would have been?
No, I'd have to figure that one out.
You mean, if the people who went out, did it go up to everybody, or... He's answering the questions, I think, wrongly, I might add. I was just, I was just interested, is, you know, really parent, you know, involvement is, it's been always a huge problem, it's always going to be sort of a huge problem. So I just want to see it.
We have a terrific PTO at our school, and great parents on our school council, and our council works well with our PTO.
Great.
So they're both support to me.
Oh, good. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, great work. Yeah, there is a lot I could see going on, and it's really, I think the hard thing is try to see the trees through the forest and the forest through the trees. So it's knowing that there are individual kids here, and it's great to know that the teachers are focusing on individual kids and not getting lost in the data here. One of my questions is on the interventions. How do you go about selecting the interventions based on the needs you identify, and how do you learn about what interventions there are? Just, can you explain that a little bit?
This is the work of our district leadership team, our school leadership team, and our directors. We look at data, end-of-year data. We looked at the grade test. We look at DIBELS tests. We look at, we ask for input from the classroom teachers. We have a student support team at our school, made up of teachers at every grade level and specialists, and we select the kids based on needs, test results in data, and teacher input.
I was just trying to get a little bit, once you've done all that analysis, then how do you go to the particular curriculum? I mean, that's, how do you go from, once you know the need, where do you go out and find the programs that can address that need? How do you go...
That's on the advice of our director, Dr. Margaret Adams, the reading director. She recommends certain programs that we will use, like Anne Jane Skelton, our ELA director. For example, Read 180 is an example of an intervention. We looked at the grade test. We had grade-level team meetings, team meetings, and we selected the students based on their needs for that program. And then we have other students based on, who are getting interventions through the special ed department. It's on their IEP, based on testing results.
Thank you, Mr. Wizel. Other questions on the School Improvement Plan? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. That's it for, nope, that's it for my portion of the report. Thank you.
Brings us to item number six, deliberations. We have a budget update. Ms. Oliver has supplied a budget breakdown in the packet for your information, current year-to-date expenditures, et cetera. Unless we have any questions on that, we'll move on to item number two, which is the Subcommittee Updates. Any questions on the budget material? Seeing none, Subcommittee Updates.
One question. One question. Mr. O'Tree?
Just a quick question on the budget pie chart. Ms. Crowe and I were just wondering, at the substitute expenses year-to-date was $107,675. Is that on target, or is that high or low, or, because that's always something I worry about at the end of the year.
Slightly lower than last year.
Slightly lower? And what was that budget item again? Do you remember, I think, what we budgeted for substitutes?
I don't know.
Yeah. How much? $400,000? Okay. Thank you.
What?
I think the [inaudible]. I have to go down.
Okay.
Any other questions on the budget update? Otherwise, item number two is the Subcommittee Updates. If we can hear from any of the Subcommittee Chairs or members. Seeing none? None? We don't have to have any. It's just [inaudible]. Don't feel pressured to. Okay? We have the approval of the revised 2009, 2010 school calendar. Again, the information is in your packet, Ms. Ronzio. Questions on the proposed calendar for next year?
Question. Mr. Duffy?
My understanding is that we're revising the calendar again because of the two special elections that are coming up, and on the January, was it 19th? We were fortunate that we had a professional development day that had to come in, so that worked so well. But my concern is on the December election date. We are planning to hold the polls in the schools while school is going on? Yeah. Okay. And each, the plan has been developed by each individual principal for how they're going to utilize the space to facilitate the process. And we are basically making sure that we're guaranteeing people who come in to vote are basically funneled right into the voting polls and then right out of the building. Yeah, the two biggest concerns, we're getting folks directly in and out, and also making sure that we had handicap, you know, full handicap access to, you know, a space that was not difficult to get to for folks who do have a handicap, became the polling place. So those two items have been taken care of in each school. And offhand, does anyone remember the last time that we had an election held in a school while school is going on?
Not too long ago.
Not too long ago?
Two years.
And everything went well, right? I just, I know that it was raised in the conversation with some principals who had been here at that time, and that was brought into the discussions, and it was shared among the principals, you know, to get some advice as to how best to plan their individual schools. The same plan, or with some modifications based upon what we learned the last time? I think the individual schools are pretty much sticking with the plans that they had. I think, I don't think that they experienced any particular problems. I think we just... I think we just added, or, and I'm not even necessarily saying it was added, but we had a particular concern about handicap access, but apparently, it's, we've got good plans.
And the same level of police enforcement? Or police presence?
Well, because I wasn't there before, but I, yes, as I understand it, there will be police presence, as there has been in the past, for each election.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Other questions on the proposed calendar? Mr. Froyo?
Yes, Mr. Smith. I know down in Linden, we're going to have a problem with the parking, with the teachers parking in the parking lot on the street. The voters probably aren't going to have anywhere to park. Have we thought about that?
Well, we have, I know that we're going to talk to Chief Cray and the Transportation Department prior to that, to see if there, you know, some accommodations can be made somewhere along the streets, you know, for folks who are coming. But that's, you know, basically out of our control. We are trying to collaborate with all appropriate departments to see what we can do to provide folks with the greatest amount of access possible.
I just, Mr. Smith?
Point of information, we all know that typically, it is more of a problem in the morning than it is for the evening rush to vote. Schools are pretty much empty by then, and parking lots would be available. But there always has been a transportation and access issue at all of the sites that we've selected, in the morning hours, especially, people are there to vote. So, we just, we'll do the best we can, and if we can clear up some of the areas of the parking adjacent to the schools for voters, then we can work with the principals to do that. But the teachers have first call in spots?
I understand that. But I've been down there in the afternoon without voting going on, and it's hectic down there in school. I mean, it's very, it's a, it's a good thing they have a good crossing guy, Jim Donahue, who keeps things moving, keeps people slowed down. But sometimes he gets some crude remarks from parents, but, so I hope, I hope it's going to go all right.
You can't believe it, Mr. Froyo.
It happens.
We give a little faith. Do the best we can, I think, for it. It's an odd situation where we have the senatorial election kind of in the middle of the year. I'm sure the clerk's office is, will find a job getting everything done. Mr. Duffy?
I do want to acknowledge what Mr. Froyo said, that will be very difficult, so I'm urging the parents and the voters to please take care. It's a difficult time. The regular parking won't be available in the parking lot because of the teachers. But Mr. Froyo made me think of another question. The polls will be opening at seven AM, and teachers are really not required to be acting as enforcement for the schools until about seven forty-five, eight o'clock. Do we have a plan in place for that first forty-five minutes or hour when people are allowed to come in the building? I mean, I don't want to go into detail about what I'm worried about, but I want to make sure that we are prepared.
Yeah, the administrative staff knows that they need to be in the schools in order to cover the elections throughout the entire day before school, as well as throughout the school day and after handed off. So, I'm very confident that we're in good shape, you know, to be able to manage that. Also, I want to remind folks that even on the days where we have normally had the elections, the teachers have been there. We've had professional development day. So, it's less an issue of the parking than it is the, as Mr. Froyo pointed out, the safety of the kids, you know, at those two particular moments, you know, at the crossing. So, that's where we have to pay the greatest amount of attention to kind of beef up our support.
Thank you.
Other questions on the proposed calendar or any other item other than even the election dates? Otherwise, we need a vote on the calendar?
Make a motion.
Mr. Duffy so moves. Mr. Froyo seconds. All in favor on the proposal? A roll call requests on the calendar.
Yes. Mrs. Doc Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Froyo?
Yes.
Mr. Ivey?
No.
Mrs. Rivera Rogers?
No.
Mr. Altren?
Yes.
Mr. Winslow?
Yes.
Mayor Howard?
That seems to pass, but yes. Calendar's done for now.
That completes the items on the agenda for this evening. We can take points of personal privilege if any members would like to weigh in before the votes. Slide on the left is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is point of information for grandparents raising grandchildren. There are meetings that are held on a monthly basis at six thirty Salem Street. It'll be posted on MATV. Information will be out on The Advocate, hopefully, The Observer, Malden News, and flyers going out to the different schools. So, if there's any grandparent out there raising a grandchildren, there is a support group in the city of Malden. I also want to wish everybody a happy Veterans Day for all our veterans that have served in the past, family members, community members, and the community as a whole, and the soldiers serving overseas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rivera Rogers. Mr. Winslow?
Yes, I too want to thank the veterans. We do have the annual Malden Veterans Day Parade, which is at, starting at ten o'clock in downtown. So, wish all the veterans, wish everybody happy Thanksgiving as well, and good luck to the Malden High Football Team against Medford. Thanks.
Ms. Doc Angelo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to remind families of special needs students that on Thursday, November nineteenth, at six thirty, the Linden School is hosting a pumpkin crafts night. It'll be a great night for kids to get out and parents to mingle with supportive other parents and network. So, please, everybody should be getting more information in children's backpacks and on school windows and such. So, keep it in mind, November nineteenth. Thank you, and everyone have a happy Thanksgiving as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Froyo?
I'd like to urge all the citizens of Malden to get out to view the parade and give thanks to the servicemen that have given their life, given some part of their life, so that we can be free.
Thank you, Mr. Froyo. Ms. Crowe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Speaking of parades, we'll be having our sixth annual Parade of Holiday Traditions Saturday, November twenty-eighth, the Saturday after Thanksgiving. Steps off at ten o'clock from the Salemwood School, but we're always looking for marchers and groups to volunteer, so we encourage everybody to come on out and, you know, get involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. Mr. Ivey?
Just as a reminder, Malden Kiwanis this Thursday on the twelfth of November will once again host its annual luncheon honoring the football players, the senior members of the Malden High School Football Squad, and the senior members of the Everett High Football Squad. It's become a tradition, the Malden Kiwanis, for a number of years. That's this Thursday at Anthony's. We urge, again, the seniors and any parents who wish to go, please contact, feel free to give me, contact me, so I can make arrangements with Anthony's Malden. And again, just a day of thanks to those veterans who made the ultimate sacrifice and who are currently in Hamzeh Way in Iraq and Afghanistan and deployed in other parts of the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ivey. Chair, we'll repeat that message on the parades. If you can, please take a moment and come out Wednesday to acknowledge the service of veterans from Malden and beyond. Chair, we'll also note, a word of thanks goes to the Malden Golden Tornado Club for the nice event that they ran on Saturday. Congratulations to the inductees, to the Sports Hall of Fame. Seeing no other items of business, we can take a motion to adjourn by Mr. Altren, second and by Ms. Crowe, all in favor.
Aye.